Appreciate it. All right. February twenty-six, two thousand and thirteen, Gulf County Board of County Commissioners, now session. I'm Paul Panzoli. Chairman?
Father, we thank you again for the day that you have blessed us with. We ask God for your guidance and protection on us as individuals, as a county, and as a nation. We also ask for your guidance and direction as we lead this county as the people expect. Father, give this board wisdom and insight as to what your will would be.
Pledge to the flag of the United States of America, and the Confederate Republic stands one nation, our God, indivisible, ever-dead and just as one.
I'd like to thank everyone for coming out. Start our meeting off by asking anyone, do anyone have anything for the consent agenda from the public? No one from the public for the consent agenda? Can I get a vote from the board?
Motion to accept.
Got a motion by Commissioner Mike Daniels, seconded by Commissioner Bryant. Any opposed? Any opposed? Opposed, motion carries, five and oh.
Mr. Chairman, we have Mr. Jay Rish with the Lighthouse Utilities.
Mr. Rish.
We'll move on to Mr. John Comer.
I blew in again, Carmen, sorry. I want to talk today about the Restore Act a little bit. One of the problems we have, somebody told me the other day they didn't like outsiders coming in and telling them what to do, and Carmen made a similar comment to me some time back. And I understand that, and it's true. And it's very difficult to deal with because as far as an outsider is concerned, I'm probably the biggest outsider ever stood here. Not only am I outside for three thousand miles, I've come from a whole new philosophy. And you folks are looking at the Restore Act, and the Restore Act is going to be directed and implemented by those people who share my political perspectives, not yours. And that's going to be a problem. Two weeks ago, twelve senators from southern states sent a letter to Attorney General and said that the Justice Department is in fact ignoring the Restore Act provisions and going off on them. I'm sure you're aware of that. The Restore Act, once President Obama got reelected, was DOA. I'm not sure Mitt Romney would have dealt with it, but it was DOA. And here's what's happening. It's pretty evident from what I stand that, committed deal, BP wants indemnity. That's all they care about. And what the Justice Department is the only agency that can give them an indemnity, and whatever they're going to pay for it, that's what they're going to settle for. Has nothing to do with anything else. It's all politics. It seems likely to me that the Justice Department is going to decide how to allocate and how to distribute any and all funds that come in from what you might call the beforehand. When they do this, they're going to start investigating who's going to get what and trying to figure out how they can cut that down. And the truth of the matter is, it is far more likely, in my mind, that Gulf County will become the ward of a federal court before you ever see a dime of Restore money. And the reason for this is that when the feds look at who's going to get the money, they're going to look at what kind of political entities are these? And you guys have a problem, because when they look at Gulf County, the first thing they're going to see is, you do not have a republican form of government as mandated by the U.S. Constitution. That's the first thing. The second thing is, you do not recognize your responsibilities and obligations to the Constitution of the state of Florida as a county in Florida. And the third thing you don't do is protect the U.S. constitutional rights, the Florida constitutional rights, or Florida law for the residents of Florida. So they're going to come in and they're going to impose that on top of you, unless you do something about it. Now, the smoking gun here is your school district, which blatantly practices sex discrimination, gender biased education. It's statistic, it's easy to prove, and it's wrong. If you do not do something about that, that's why they're going to come in. It gives them the legal grounds to come in and make you ward of the court. I went to the school board a couple of weeks ago, and I presented them with a petition for the redress agreements under the First Amendment of the Constitution. I said, "These are your problems, these are what you have to do. Fix this, and you can fix the whole system." Unfortunately, I did not get a good rate of faith response. And so therefore, here's what's happening. I came by today, I'm going to drop off for you two things. One is what you can do to create a republican form of government in Gulf County as mandated by the U.S. Constitution, including some background information. The other thing is a copy of the redress, my petition for the redress agreements to school district, so you can see what kind of case they have and what the issues are. And then you can take whatever action you guys feel is appropriate. I don't know. I've come to the conclusion, really, that you folks don't really want jobs in Gulf County, because bringing jobs to Gulf County is pretty much a no-brainer. But nothing goes on. We've got a lot of action, a lot of showboat, nothing's happening. And if you really wanted that to happen, you'd fix it. We do know that the Eastern Shipbuilding created zero jobs in Gulf County, for Gulf County residents. Zero. And what did they say? That people who applied were untrainable. Now, this is a school issue, folk, and it's an economic issue, and it falls under your purview, under the definition of a county government. And I would like you to look at that. Anyway, I dropped off this information. I kind of look at Gulf County as an adopted child. I chose to move here. And so I'd like to protect it as best I can and help the best I can. And the fact that I come from a very different world, I'm a resource, and I think you should probably use me as such, because I'll share with a changed hand whenever I can. Thank you very much. And Mr. Jay Rish, come in.
Mr. Chairman, if I can, if I can step out of order and just, if I can address the PDRB recommendations before we have the public hearing on that, we can dismiss those. Last week, on February eighteenth, the planning board met and considered four variance applications. The first on the list provided to you from our county planner was tabled by the PDRB for additional boundary surveys and a corrective minor replat. The second you'll see is a variance application for a spirit of holiness church. It was the recommendation of the PDRB that approval by five oh vote for a structure addition to the encroach, for an encroachment of an eight foot into the road setback, and it was unanimous recommendation of the PDRB to grant that variance application.
Now, comment, Mr. Chairman. Excuse me, on this holiness, on this holiness church issue, this is an issue that we need to discuss, I'd like to bring it forward to board. And Joe, would you come up and let's go ahead and get into this and discuss it a little bit further, please? It's my understanding, this is good, but I don't think this is exactly what the church is actually needing. And it's my understanding, Joe, that y'all have contacted the neighbors, they have no problem or no issue with what y'all are trying to do. You know, Jim, and I want to look at this real close before we make a decision on it. And Joe, would you comment on that, please?
Yes, sir.
I need your name for the record, please, full name.
Joe Glass.
Thank you.
I have two pictures here. I think, isn't it, Mr. Glass, that y'all wanting to go twelve feet, maybe, or something like that, instead of the eight? Is that what you're needing?
What it is, we, right now, we want to tear this old porch off the church, because it has a, two step ups in there, and it's hard for our senior citizens to get in. And we want to come out, when we tear the porch off, we want to come out twenty foot from the porch towards the highway for our porch line, the roof line. That'll give us room to build an eight-foot porch out here, and our bathrooms, which will be a ten by twelve, on each side of that porch there, we can build our bathrooms inside. The bathrooms now are outside, and they have to walk about fifty foot to get to them. And they don't have any covering there to walk, so we need the bathrooms. But we're asking the board to allow us to come twenty foot from the existing sanctuary wall there in the front, out. Now, that wall is fifty-seven foot from the center line in the highway. So that will leave thirty-seven foot from the highway, the center line of the highway, to the front of where our porch will come. It'll leave thirty-seven foot. Also, we're asking for, to build a parking, a covered parking place on the right side, which is the west side of the church, and to build on the approach on the left side, a place where we can unload our citizens, the senior citizens that don't need to get wet. And I'm one of them too. We want to see if you can arrange this to where we could build it according to this plan. Like it is, I know the board approved our building, but they didn't come out far enough, because they thought there was a line going in the front, but there's not a electric line going in front of the church there. It's on both sides of the church, on the roads there. So there's plenty of room left. You know, we're not under any power lines, and we're not interfering with the roadway that still has a frontage.
Jim, and I don't have a problem with it, and the reason I don't, number one, is the church is to better serve the senior citizens. And they contacted the surrounding neighbors, they don't have a problem with it. I don't know, I'd make a motion that we approve it. That's my motion.
More comments from the board?
Yeah, Ms. Chairman, I may. This is very embarrassing.
Hold on for a minute. I got a motion by Mr. Mike Dan, Mike, uh, Michael Moore. Can I get a second?
Our second for discussion. Sorry, Ms. Chairman. As I stated, Mr. Glass, this church is in Weewee Hitchcock.
No, it's in White City.
Oh, okay, because I knew, I thought I knew you have a church in, okay. All right, thank you for recognizing there.
I can add it in Weewee.
Bring us from the board.
Is the motion to approve what the PDRB recommended, or to approve?
To approve what Mr. Glass needs, and that's building thirty-seven foot from the center of the right away.
Right, from center of the highway.
Yeah.
That still gives you seven feet, the right of ways are sixty feet, if I correct on this, the right of ways, but you're still seven feet inside, off from the boundary line.
Right. I think that's workable, you know, being, being the effect of it, which it would greatly better, you know, serve the senior citizens and the church, and that the people surrounding neighbors does not have a problem with it. Carmen don't have a problem with it, my motion's on it. One other, Ms. Chairman, Mr. Richardson, PDRB, we're being asked to make a modification to the recommendation of the board there. Do you have any comment on this?
Yes, sir, a discussion, the PDRB was concerned about the presence of going all the way at the property line with the variance. Traditionally, the board is making at least a ten foot from the right away line. Also, the survey does show overhead wires and that, they took that into consideration. So if it went to eight, from eight to twelve, probably, you know, not so bad, but if it went all the way to property line, um, that's a judgment call.
But we're not asking for the property line, we're asking for thirty-seven feet from the center of the right away, which will put it seven feet off from the property line. So we're not asking for the proper, you know, the property line itself.
Just so I understand it, with, PDRB approved eight foot, an encroachment of eight foot, how much more, how many more feet, David, is, are we asking for by going with Michael Moore's motion?
You want to go from eight to twelve?
It's three, it's about three feet. No, it's thirty-seven.
Yes, sir.
That porch is eight foot and a half from the church, the front of the sanctuary. Okay, what we're wanting is to go twenty foot from the front of the sanctuary. So you only be, we'll be getting actually about twelve foot and few inches there.
Four extra feet from what, the planning board?
Yep, that's right, yes, sir.
Commissioner Bryant?
Well, you know, I was at this PDRB meeting, and there was some discussion about the power lines and concern for the power lines.
There's, Mr. Husband's going to check on that now, but there was a mistake there, the power lines run north and south on the east and west side of the church. The power line does not run east and west there in front of the church.
I would like for us to approve what works for the church and allow the church to put the bathrooms where they want them, that work for their, and that church. However, I'm just a little concerned about the issues that the PDRB did spend the time discussing and considering. I think that those are valid enough concerns for us to consider, and maybe we need the PDRB to reexamine what you're asking for prior to voting on it.
I think it's very clear with his presentation what he's asking for. I truly understand it, you know, and he's thirty-seven feet from the center of the right away.
Well, I haven't, I have not been there to look at the power lines and what the issue is. I do know that the gentleman on the PDRB did discuss that issue, that it was a concern. So I feel somewhat at a loss to vote for something that the PDRB was concerned about. And that's a reason that we have them in place to advise us.
How soon are you wanting to start this project?
As soon as we can, we need it.
You're ready to start the project?
Yes, sir.
And again, so I'm sorry, is there a power line across the front there, or David, you know?
There's not a power line down east and west on, east and west Beatty Street.
Okay.
There's not a power line in the front of the church. The power lines go north and south on the side of the church, both sides. The only power line we have, where it comes over to the end of the parsonage, it's already there, it's about four foot from the parsonage, and it goes down the alleyway between the parsonage and the church. And there will not be anything under that power line. But there's not one on the front of the church that goes, you know, we get our power from the west side, from the power line that goes down there.
Mr. Husband, maybe he can lighten us?
May I ask a question while he's coming up? Mr. Glass, good to see you, hadn't seen you in a while. You want, this extension will be on the front of the church, which is facing east?
West Beatty Street.
The front of the church is facing west.
Right.
Okay.
No, it's facing north, it's facing west Beatty Street.
I need to get on this.
Facing north, and that's where you're going to put, you want to move north? Right.
So what about on the side, strictly the front of the church?
We got, I think we want twelve foot on the west side to put a covered parking area.
Twelve foot on the west, okay, and you're going to move up on to the north?
It'll go, it'll be twelve foot away from the west side of the church, and it'll be eighteen foot long. Twelve foot out, eighteen foot long, just enough for a car to park under.
Okay, all right.
And on the, on the east side, we want to put a fourteen by twenty turnaround there, where they can come in and unload their cars, we got a right away there, turnaround. We'll still be forty foot from the center line on the west, east side there. Still have forty foot difference there.
I'm sorry. Jack Ho, Southeast Consulting Engineers. Sorry about the incorrectness of the survey, but I just went and checked the survey again, and Mr. Glass is correct, there is no power, overhead electric lines running east and west along West Beatty Drive on the north side of the church. And he is asking for four additional feet from what was originally proposed and provided by the PDRB. He's asking for four more feet.
But will the four feet fall within the guidelines that we, our PDR board?
That'll put him basically, if he asks for four more feet, that's going to put him twelve foot over the setback, so he'll have eight feet from the property line to where his new construction will begin. He'll be eight foot from the property line.
Eight feet there from the property line, eight feet, okay.
Ms. Chairman, I'll listen to the second, please.
We had a motion by Mr. Michael Moore, we have a second by Mr. Mike Daniels.
Mr. Chairman, just one thing, Mr. Glass had mentioned it was twelve and a few inches, and I don't know if Jack can maybe elaborate, but if you, before, so we don't have to come back when we visit the issue, is it not to exceed maybe thirteen? I think Mr. Glass mentioned maybe twelve feet and a few inches, so if you need more, now be the time to discuss the, however, if it's not to exceed a certain amount.
Let me correct my motion there. Motion would be not to exceed over thirteen feet. Okay? Did that clear it up?
You got a motion by Mr. Michael Moore? You got a second by Mr. Mike Daniels? Any opposed? No opposed, motion carries, five and oh.
Mr. Chairman, the third, I'm sorry, the third item on the variance applications was with regards to Mars Real Estate Ventures. It was a request for a ten-foot encroachment to the road setback to meet the EEP's coastal construction line permitting requirements. It was a five oh unanimous vote of the PDRB to recommend that variance setback for the encroachment to enable the applicant to seek their coastal construction permitting. They offer it to you as a five oh vote.
A motion by Mr. Michael Moore? Second by Mr. Yeager? Have any opposed? No opposed, motion carries, five and oh.
Mr. Chairman, the fourth item is with regards to Ms. Ruby Griffin. You have a PDRB recommendation of a four oh vote with one abstention for the approval of the structure to use seven and a half feet next to Light Keepers Drive, and it was a recommendation of the PDRB with one abstention for that variance.
Some movement, Chairman.
A motion by Mr. Yeager? Second by Ms. Bryant? Any opposed?
Uh, quick question, where is this, this partial located? I don't, now she up, section thirty-one, where is this partial located, Mr.?
Right next to Veterans Park, Beacon Hill.
Okay, okay.
I had a motion by Mr. Yeager, seconded by Commissioner Bryant. Do you have any opposed? No opposed, motion carries, five and oh.
Mr. Chairman, if I can, and I thank you for that, the next public hearings with regards to the proposed animal control ordinance that you all considered on February twelfth, you all have a copy of that proposed ordinance language in front of you, as well a copy, a summary of the public comments and the areas of concern addressed by the public during February twelfth, first public hearing. And it is a pre-page summary versus the actual entire ordinance. I'd like to draw your attention specifically with regards to the comments received before we went to public hearing. The comments centered on our tethering language on page six, enforcement language on pages seven, the right of entry on page nine, our human care comments on page eleven, twelve.
It's six, seven, nine, eleven, twelve?
Yes, Mr. McDaniel, and in that summary that you have in front, you have listed the page numbers there. The animals and motor vehicles on page twelve, the kennel requirements on page fourteen, the voting's control comments for vaccinations and certifications to the county on pages twenty-two and twenty-three, our dangerous and aggressive animals on page twenty-four. And those are the comments received from the public during our first public hearing. And I'd like to ask the commission and the chairman to open it up to our second public hearing, which has been properly noticed under statute two eighty-six, for additional public comments and questions and recommendations to the commission, and then entertain further comments from you as well.
Mr. Michael Moore?
I've looked at this, every page of it, actually, the only I have with this, I think I stated it at the last board meeting, excuse me, is probably the permitting fee. I don't have an issue with the permit itself, but for us to have to, and I'm, and I say yes, because I'm an animal lover and a dog owner, you have to buy a hundred dollar permit each year to own pets and hunting dogs, or whatever it may be, I'm opposed to that. I don't have a problem with getting the permit, it's the fee that I have a problem with. I want the board to be aware of that. It says in here that, you know, I think I'm correct on this, anything over seven animals has to be permitted. But that only takes one female dog, for instance, to have a litter of puppies, and then you fit into that criteria. I think that there may be something we could look at on the ages of the puppies that would not put you into that category, you know, but my biggest issue is the fee. We pay a hundred dollars a year for, actually, we know we have that, we pay a hundred dollars a year for a hunting license. Now, we're going, every year, we got to pay a hundred dollar fee for, you know, to house our pets. I'm totally against that, and I want the board and the public to know that.
Any comments from the public? On this matter here, any comments from the public?
Chairman, I've also read over this, and you have some questions. Discuss them now, or we can. Send it back to the subcommittee.
Sandy Christie, resident in Gulf County, in Cape Town, Blas. Just from the Humane Society perspective, we've gone back over this page by page two to try to address some of the concerns we heard, and of course, we're not the decision makers in this process, but I know that you guys tend to come to us and ask us for your input. So first of all, on the kennel permitting, the Humane Society receives zero dollars for that, that's certainly a county issue rather than a Humane Society issue. So we totally support that recommendation, we want to make it affordable, and we think that it's more important that people have the money to get required vaccinations and feed their animals. On the permitting, the kennel permitting, we think it's perfectly reasonable to say over seven animals that are in excess of four months of age. So that gets you over the puppy stage. An animal, a dog, should stay with the mother, should, for twelve weeks, eight weeks is the minimum standard for state law. So if you put that requirement in there, you can definitely have a litter of puppies without falling into the kennel permitting arena, and hopefully that would satisfy that concern. If it doesn't, then I would recommend perhaps you go back to the original ordinance, which stated that kennels would be more than ten animals. We would also draw your attention to the feral animal section again, where we really wanted to take care of any concerns from the wonderful people in the community that continue to feed the feral cats and some of the other animals. So we met with a group here in town that is very active, and they're also volunteers in the Humane Society, but they're very active in going out and trapping and releasing these feral cats after they're spayed and neutered. So in that meeting, on page eighteen, halfway down where it says prohibition on feeding, we would advise you to strike those first three words, so the section would read feral animals. I'm not an attorney, so perhaps that needs to be reworked some more, but we thought just take out the word. so perhaps that needs to be reworked some more, but we thought just take out the words prohibition on feeding. We would also recommend you strike A, B, and the first word in section C, which says exceptions. So therefore, it would read, it would start out reading, "A person may feed or harbor." Now, instead of the ands, we're also recommending ors. So it would read, "A person may feed or harbor a feral animal if the animal is spayed or neutered." To us, that's extremely important. That's an issue we deal with every day at the Humane Society. Since we built our shelter almost six years ago, the numbers have continued to increase. In fact, last year, upon closer investigation, we find that we gave Gulf County twelve thousand dollars worth of free care for animals that were delivered to our Humane Society because they were stray or discarded or unwanted litters. Now, the good news here in the spay-neuter arena is that two of our volunteers submitted for a grant from PetSmart this last year. We received a twenty thousand dollar spay-neuter grant from PetSmart. We just got that money in. It's to be used in area code three-two-four-five-six, which actually goes outside slightly Gulf County. It's to be used for dogs only. But twenty thousand dollars goes a long way when you can spay and neuter an animal for fifty dollars or less. So we wanted to pass this out to you commissioners while we're speaking about those ordinance. You can copy these. We can get you more of these posters. You'll see a billboard soon because the grant also allowed us some advertising dollars for this free spay-neuter program. But I'm also passing out applications, and these can be copied and handed out to your constituents, or we can get you more copies. So basically, what we're saying is if you're a citizen of Gulf County, you can apply for this. Now, if you're not in area code three-two-four-five-six, you're still eligible because the Humane Society, every year, from the proceeds of the Bow Wow Bash, designates money for free spay-neuter for cats and dogs. So if you live in White City, if you live in Dow Keys, if you live in Weewall, you're still eligible for this program. So we want everybody in Gulf County and three-two-four-five-six to consider spaying and neutering your animals. We've taken away any financial concern. So, moving on. We would then go to the current two, and we would just say, "A person may feed or harbor a feral animal if they accept legal responsibility for the animal," which includes ensuring compliance with all provisions of this chapter. And then again, we put in an or instead of an and. And then the last would be, "A person may feed or harbor a feral animal while it is on private property and with the expressed written approval of that property owner." You know, that's important because sometimes an overzealous person can go onto somebody else's property and feed that feral cat or animal, and that property owner really doesn't want that to happen. So we think that's important. Those are our comments about the feral cat or the feral animal section. As far as rabies, Roland Jones was gonna be here to address his concerns about rabies and some of the comments, but, you know, perhaps he's out there trying to apprehend a stray animal. What he said to me is, the reason he feels it's so important to require a veterinarian issued rabies certificate or tag is because last year, we had a rabies outbreak in this county. There was a dog bitten by a rabid skunk, I believe it was. The person could not prove that their dog had a rabies vaccination, did not even think it was current. The poor dog had to be euthanized. It, he also said, "If your dog bites another animal or a human, and you don't have proof that your animal was vaccinated for rabies, then your animal is going to be quarantined at a minimum and could possibly be euthanized because you can't prove that it had rabies." So he has concerns about anyone that would claim to give a rabies vaccination but not have proof of it. Now, we did sponsor a rabies clinic last year with the county, and it was free. So we're trying to take away, you know, anybody's objection to the cost of the rabies vaccination. This, this is coming from Animal Control. I'm reporting to you from Animal Control, not from the Humane Society. We do think it's important to be able to prove that your animal had a rabies vaccination. I know people that I run into constantly on the beach are concerned about animals running at large on the beach that don't have tags on, and they're afraid when that animal comes up and approaches them and their animal without a rabies tag, what are we talking about in terms of the effects on that person and that animal?
Uh, yes. Ms. Christie, coming this morning. Some of the concerns I have with it is a fact. Uh, I don't like bureaucracy. A lot of this wording in here, I don't know how we're going to enforce it. Honestly, don't. And as far as Mr. Jones, he called me this morning. We have high water in the north end of the county, and, uh, I was out last night checking bridges. There was animals out on the road because the water had forced them out. So Mr. Jones, it's not that he didn't want to be here, but he was there this morning. So, uh, I can vouch for that. But, uh, all this wording in here, I don't know how we're going to enforce it. What in here, I, I agree with, just like with the rabies. I agree with that. Just because I said my dog had a shot, or if he didn't, then pick him up, well, I don't know whose he is. Well, I know whose he is. It was my neighbor, but I'm not gonna put my neighbor on the spot, all of that, but. Documentation. I know last year, the Gulf County Health Department, at this time of year, a little later on, held one of we were educating. A lot of people in Port St. Joe brought their animals up there, and they were all documented. So we got documentation on that. Here, those animals. But, uh, you don't know if they had them or not. How are we gonna enforce this? That's a lot of this. We got a lot of wording in here, but it comes to reality.
Yeah, I, I think, Mr. McDaniel, if I may answer you, a little bit there. I think the whole intent, Roland, he's very sensible and common sense man. He has this, or safety net, in other words, in case he has to really push an issue, he has it. And, and that's the way I see this. Am I right, Mr. Christie, with this?
Mr. McLemore, we, we met on five different occasions, and that came up, I think, at each meeting, was the issue of enforcement.
Yeah.
And I think, uh, Ms. Christie's comments today, um, with regards to the Humane Society, and also, um, some of Roland's comments, are that they wanted to create an ordinance that they could obviously grow into in terms of staffing and budgeting and funding in the future, or create an environment where they could be enforcing in the future. Without an ordinance, cannot enforce it. If the language is there, we have Roland out there enforcing as one agent, and, and in future, ideally, we'll grow into the ordinance where we have the ability to enforce it. Um, with Ms. Christie's comments, I know that in the last week and a half, there's been considerable comment. I've had discussions with several of the commissioners. If it could be something that we could go back with Ms. Christie, uh, Commissioner McLemore as the liaison for the committee, and also possibly have Roland come and offer those additional comments. Um, you know, the animals riding in the vehicles issue has received considerable comment, um, both from the commissioners and myself. Um, and Ms. Christie's touched on some of the others here, uh, to explore. Like I said, the ordinance was drafted in such a way from the Humane Society and the Animal Control Subcommittee, so, with the understanding that there is not the ability right now to fully enforce everything in this ordinance. And, and I can say that because I think it came up at each meeting, but with the hope and ideal that they could get to that point.
Right. And, and this is, you know, this is why we have the meetings, gentlemen. This is nothing that we're going to do today, either tomorrow. So we bring it to the public, and we'll work through this. You know, like the attorney said, we need to go back on some issues that Ms. Christie brought up, some that I brought up, and tweak them a little bit, and keep working with it. And that means today, we'll get it right.
Thank you very much.
If, is there any additional comment, Mr. Chairman?
Do we have any more additional?
Good morning. Hi, I'm Nancy Leist. I'm a Port St. Joe resident, uh, for three years. Um, I just want to add my comments about the, um, the issue on animal control. Um, and I support the revisions of the animal ordinance set forth by the Humane Society, and I respectfully request that the council consider and adopt the new language set forth today. Um, as far as the feral animal issue, um, and not to be redundant as to what Sandy has just said, uh, let me just clarify. I, I believe the, the word feral is a misnomer. These are not true feral animals. An overwhelming majority of the animals that roam the neighborhoods and the cities, they are the result of unwanted and discarded and abandoned and unaltered animals. I mean, human ignorance has created this problem, but it's an easily fixed problem. Uh, we need more public funding for spay and neuter, and also, we need stronger anti-cruelty laws. And what constitutes cruelty? And I know that the, the issue of how do we enforce all this, you know, I, I think, as you say, you grow into the, the mindset of, of how we, how we solve all these issues. Um, as far as feeding of the strays, all I ask is that you not further victimize these poor helpless animals, you know, by denying them a potential meal. I mean, and, and I'm, I'm one of these people who are out there on a daily basis feeding the animals. I don't want to become a criminal by doing such, but, you know, it's just something that I feel that needs to be addressed and done. Uh, as I was coming across the bridge this morning, I saw the sign, and it says, "A pet-friendly town." I hope that we become a more animal compassionate town, and thank you.
Thank you. One question, ma'am, if you would. On the, uh, another part that concerns me, and I've been trying to look up all the penalties, one that really bothers me is the, you spoke on it, is people with cruelty and neglect. I haven't seen this. I, we're talking, let's talk about horses yet. Same thing. Over in, uh, understanding in Liberty County, people are just going over there and turning them loose in the national forest. They can't feed them or don't want them anymore. We're talking about horses. Now, I haven't seen that. That's what I've heard. I, that really put, I wouldn't care if you had a fine thousand dollars on this for cruelty, neglect to the animals. Not the animal's fault, it's the human's fault.
Exactly, yes. Um, I, again, I am not animal control.
No.
I don't know if, uh, you know, he's not there to, to speak as to how he is able to prosecute these cases. But to me, it seems like, I mean, maybe we need more people. Maybe we, we need to hire more people for, to, you know, police the areas, so to speak.
Well, prosecution goes through the court system.
And let me comment on that, Mr. McDaniel. From past experience personally, I can tell you, this county does not in any way, on your animal cruelty, I'm telling you, they will get behind you, and they'll put him in jail. I know that from past experience.
Well, that's good to know.
This is a pet-friendly county.
Good, good. Thank you very much.
Little comments from the audience?
Good morning. I'm Gary Gibbs from, uh, zip code three-two-four-five-six, also known as Mexico Beach. Uh, and I'm here to speak on behalf of Ms. Carolyn Lee and Mr. Leon Lee. I've spoken extensively with Carolyn, and her only concern with this ordinance is the fee that is applied to the permitting for the kennel. Uh, Mr. and Ms. Lee have about fourteen to fifteen animals at their home, and every one of those was abused, abandoned, run over, and this home of theirs has become the very last chance for these animals. And Carolyn and Leon, for years, and of course, they were the founders of the St. Joseph Bay Humane Society, they spend an ordinate amount of resources, their resources, caring for these animals. And Ms. Carolyn said, "If I have to pay a fee, that means I'm gonna have to cut back on the medical care or the feeding of these animals." She had experienced, since we cannot afford it. And she has also said that, at their age, they will not be taking in any more animals of any type that is physically, mentally, and financially can't do it. But don't burden them as they try to give these fourteen to fifteen animals their last few days here on earth. Thank you.
With, with that, Mr. Chairman, I think we've all heard many of the comments. I had many of them written down, and many of them were discussed here. I had pleaded that give me a, a, you know, several pages of comments. And so I think we do need to take those comments, refer them back to the committee, make the changes that we need to change. I agree with a hundred dollars, as, as Mr. Gibbs just said. I, I, I'm, I'm not opposed necessarily to the permit, but I am opposed to the fee. So I think if we can throw that back to the, to the group and, and let them come back with, with changes that, that I mentioned here today, I think we'll be good.
Attorney? Now, I, I, I've received all those comments. You have summaries from February twelfth. We've taken today's. Um, I'd, I'd encourage Mr. Jones, if we can, we'll meet again with the subcommittee. Some of the comments from Ms. Christie today were unanimous recommendations of the committee, um, with the changes and the comments that they've heard. They've understood some of the comments from the commission as well, and have conceded some of those. So what we'll do is we'll go back, we'll, uh, redraft that language. We'll have Mr. Jones participate. We'll have Commissioner McLemore participate as liaison, and then we'll have, we'll come back to you all for a final, um, hearing, if you will, and public comment. And we'll invite Mr. Jones to offer a comment. I think it's important that he come and address some of these issues for you all too, and answer some of your questions before you have actually consideration of this, uh, ordinance.
County business. Thank you.
Um, yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Only thing, um, I would just like to report, um, last, on board meeting, Commissioner Bryant had requested, um, travel numbers for the last previous two years and broken down into different segments. And I just wanted to let the board know that we are working on that, but we do not have that ready yet. It's a pretty extensive project, but we are working on it.
Chair?
I did give you all, um, a very brief breakdown of where we are right now, but the detail, um, that Commissioner Bryant asked for, we'll take some additional time. But I wanted to go ahead and pre- pre-mention something to you, as a number of our commissioners.
Will you?
Uh, let me think of this.
Oh.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, um, a few quick items. Beginning, um, next Monday, March fourth, we'll start our sponsorship and special funding program for two thousand thirteen, fourteen. Last year, we were behind the, um, timeframe, and we started the program in the summer when I got here, and we're trying to get ahead of budgeting. We will post, um, the packet onto the visitgulf.com website. We will have a, um, an open workshop on, um, March eighth at the TDC, and then we'll allow, um, applicants the month of March to fill out the application and to, to, um, be present, awarded by the marketing committee, um, and presented back here in early May. So I just want to let you know that. We will, um, notice it appropriately and make sure that, um, that everyone is notified. So that will be, um, next Monday. At your, um, commission meeting on November thirteenth, two thousand twelve, you approved, um, the, how I could finish spending the funds for BP. One of those, um, was for search engine marketing. It was fifteen thousand dollars. Um, we'll be completing that spend. We're doing it in-house. It's sole sourced through Google, and I'd like permission, um, to continue on search engine marketing from April through, um, through the end of September. I do have it in the budget at a cost not to exceed thirty-five hundred a month. Right now, we're at five thousand a month.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
A motion by Mr. Jaeger?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Mr. Mike Daniels?
Thirty-five hundred, right.
Per month. It's, so it's a, it will be a total from May through September of seventeen thousand five hundred.
Deal, thank you.
Got a motion by Mr. Jaeger, second by Mr. Mike Daniels. Any opposed? No opposed, motion carries, five and no.
Um, the, another part of that program was the, um, Navigate Media program that was to be in Atlanta and Birmingham markets in February and March because of inclement weather and filming. I had to push that back, so it started mid-February. It'll go through mid-April, and the program's doing very well. I just wanted to let you know that. Thank you.
Mr. Houston?
Bid number twelve thirteen dash oh eight. Project is FEMA pipe. We had one bidder. We had one bidder. It's HD Supply Water Works, $15,72680, and that's to be paid from secondary road and bridge.
For the Salts Creek Road?
No, sir. That's for five spots on Road 20, two spots on Old Bay City, Mace Martin, and Road 12.
No move, Mr. Chair.
Motion by Mr. Jaeger. Second by Mr. McLemore. Any oppose? No oppose, motion carries, five and no.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Motion.
So I'd just like to bring you up to date on the river flooding. And as you know, we've received a lot of rain over the past week and even the week prior to that, setting up our flood conditions. When this rain come along, our flood plains and rivers were already saturated. So with all the rain that we received now, looking up at Weewall, they've had a little over eighteen, eleven inches of rain since last Friday. So that's a tremendous amount of rain. Luckily, the rain set up a little bit lower than what National Weather Service had anticipated, which is going to help us instead of putting it way up in the river system, it's put it closer, and we'll be able to handle it a lot better. But I have given you the latest forecast. The first one's on Apalachico River. As you can see, they've got the gates open, and they've been slowly bringing it up ever since last Friday, trying to get some of the water out. Right now, they're looking at up close to 25 feet at Bruntstown. But it actually, it's going to crest sometime at Bruntstown around, or it's going to go moderate and start affecting us. Today at Bruntstown, it will start affecting us tomorrow. It's already affecting us. The river's full, and all we're going to see from now on is rising water. Another problem we got is on the Shippola side, which is the second handout. As you can see, it's been going up dramatically. This is because of the local rains. Shippola River is a local river, starts somewhere up around Dothan, and so it catches all that rain and then funnels it back down to us. They're forecasting a little over 28 feet there, which is a tremendous amount of water, which all ends up in Guff County. And so trying to predict how it's going to affect us is sometimes quite tricky. We will be having flood conditions. Like I said, where the water's at now, it's going to continue to rise. We're looking at something for those that were here during 2005 flood, something similar to 2005 flood, maybe just a little bit higher. So that kind of gives you an idea of kind of where we stand. I would like to talk to everybody about preparations. There's a lot of things that you can go ahead and be doing. We probably will be calling for evacuation later on this week. We're going to see how the water sets up and what it affects. For those people that choose not to evacuate, which we don't recommend, but if you choose not to evacuate, go ahead and make preparations and get food, get water, get prescriptions, get those things that you're going to need, because we're not going to be able to go in there and take care of you. And if you're going to stay, you need to take care of yourself. Another thing that you can be doing, if there's any RVs, campers, those need to be moved out. A lot of them have already been moved out. You can go ahead and remove loose debris, picnic tables, chairs, stuff like that, that are in your yard, so they won't float away. One big problem we've had in the past is LP gas tanks. Make sure that those are secure, so that they don't float away. So there's a lot of things that you can be doing to help us out if you're going to stay and then prior to leaving too. We have been over the, the past week or so, we've been making preparations as a county and city of Weewall, have been working together to make preparations. And we will be locating sandbags this morning at Highland View, I mean, Harris Creek Fire Department, Dow Keith Fire Department, and City of Weewall Public Works. And these are for those people that want to use the sandbags to protect their homes. And, you know, we ask that people don't abuse going and getting these sandbags. They are to protect, you know, the home from water getting in them. There's also a, the sandbags alone will not do the job. And I've given you all a handout here, sandbag in your home, and one of the key issues is to get VisClean and take and weave that in and out of the sandbags. And that way, the water will not seep through. And depending on how high you're building up the sandbags, you might need to build them kind of in a, start at the bottom like with two bags, and then move on up to one bag, so that holds the water back and won't fall over. But the key thing there is to go ahead and get you some VisClean and weave it in and out of the bags as you're stacking them up. So those will be available starting this morning. What I would like to, what I would like to ask is that the board go ahead and declare a local state of emergency.
No move, Mr. Chair.
Got a motion by Mr. Jaeger. Second by Mr. Mike Daniel. Any oppose? No oppose, motion carries, five and no.
And what we're planning right now is to go ahead and activate the EOC to Level 2, and we'll be running the EOC from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. every day to help run operations. And if anybody needs to contact us, that's where we'll be. Also, and for those that have signed up for it, our emergency notification system, which we put in several years ago, has really worked well. We've been able to meet, you know, those residents in the county that we need to meet. We've added on a weather alert component to it, but we can't put you in there automatically. You have to go in and sign up for it. And I know last night, I got several calls on my telephone telling me that, you know, severe weather, severe thunderstorm warning was issued and stuff like that. It's really good to, if you got your cellphone tied into it, you can get these anywhere. And the way they're set up is, let's say if they issue a tornado warning, right now, they actually do it exactly where that tornado's forecasted to go. And if you're in that area, then you'll get that call. If you're not in that area, then you won't get it. So I urge everybody to go onto our website and to sign up for this emergency notification. It's really a good way to get information, especially on your cellphone when you're out traveling around. Also, for those people that do have computers and want to keep up with what we're doing in the EOC, please visit our website, the Guff County website, Emergency Management Department, and we're keeping everything up there. We'll have all of our situation reports and all of our press releases and everything on there. Also, if you like us on Facebook, we're maintaining a Facebook also, and we have gotten a lot of hits on that Facebook and a lot of positive comments and feedback. So that's kind of where we're at right now. Any questions?
Yes. Mr. Nelson, if you would, just for the people, would you give some phone numbers?
Yes, they can contact the EOC at area code 850-229-9110, 850-229-9111. And they can get in touch with us there.
Yeah, thank you.
Like I said, we'll be there from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. every day. If something comes up when we're not there, all they have to do is to call the Sheriff's Department. If it's an emergency, of course, they dial 911. If it's non-emergency and they need to get up with us, then they can call 850-227-1115. And they can get a message to us, and we will call them back.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, any information packet there's page 6265 is COS recertification. This is good for five years. It maintains our eight rating. So it kind of goes along with what Mr. Nelson was saying about the flooding and situations like that, and the importance of mitigation and flood protection to reduce the cost of claims and what's driving up the insurance cost and recovery costs and everything else. So just for your information, that's all.
Just one thing, Mr. Chairman, and I think Lynn sent you an email yesterday. Last year, we postponed going out for bids or re-advertising a couple of the inmate welfare account deals. So I need permission to go out for RFQs for qualifications for both inmate phone system and inmate commissary system. Has no fiscal impact on your budget, because all the money that's generated goes to the inmate welfare fund, but then this will be the fourth year that we have not bid, so it's time to go out for it.
Want to go out and bid?
RFQs, yes.
I'll go out.
Yes, sir.
Another, Mr. Chairman? Second. Talking by Mr. Jaeger. No oppose? No oppose, motion carries, five and no.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, in front of you, you have a proposed draft of the ordinance that our last meeting in February 12th, you had authorized me to go ahead and draft a preliminary language with regards to home sit exemptions, or the additional home sit exemption that was passed on Amendment 11 on our November 2012 ballots. In front of you is the proposed language. What I'd like to do is go out to advertise this for a one reading and public hearing at our next meeting, and then consider it for adoption. And if I will, I'll just read it by title for the public's information, and I'll provide a copy to the clerk after we advertise this at the end of the week. It's an ordinance that brought to county commissioners for Gulf County, enlisting Section 2 of ordinance number 99-07, entitled Additional Home Sit Exemption for Persons 65 and older of Gulf County, and it's providing for conflicts, separability, and an effective date. The crux of the ordinance reads as follows: Any person 65 years of age who has legal or equitable title to any real estate located within the county and has maintained such as a permanent residence as the owner for at least 25 years, and which residence qualifies for and receives home sit exemption pursuant to Section 6 of Article 7 of the Constitution, I'm sorry, Florida Constitution. The amount of additional home sit exemption is $25,000 or the amount of assessed value of the property for any person subscribed to it in who has legal or equitable title to a real estate with adjusted value less than $250,000. This is consistent with Amendment 11 and your instructions on February 12th. And I offer to the commission, when I go out to advertise this for our first reading and adoption, consideration for adoption in the March meeting.
You know, I support this. There will be a fiscal impact, but at the end of the day, folks 65 and over will get an additional break, and that's important, I think, especially for long-term residents. So I'll make the motion to accept the recommendation to go out and advertise and start the public hearing process.
Got a motion by Mr. Jaeger. Second by Mr. Commissioner Bryant. Any oppose? No oppose? Motion carries, five and no.
Just to be put back to the commissioners with regards to industrial park lease, I believe last week was delivered again to the proposed commercial tenants following the instructions of the commission. Commissioner Bryan and I have worked in up a business proposal. I'll ask Commissioner Bryan if she wants to elaborate on the details when she discusses it. We have the right of first refusal that we'll offer to the commercial tenants after the expiration of their tenancy on the property, and also a business proposal that will formulate, will memorialize in a letter to them to put in an agreement to offer them some type of business incentive at the end of the lease to apply towards their purchase price if they choose to exercise that right of first refusal. And if we have that and they accept it, I'll come back to the five of you and provide you a copy of that for your consideration and approval. I've heard back from St. Joe representative, the commission had instructed me to reach out with regards to Willis Landing. I've reached out to them to try to get an addendum executed to tag along with our Odena Boat Ramp for the purposes, the majority of the purposes, to exercise and explore grant funding going over the next 20 years. They've responded positively. I heard as recently as this morning from Mr. Harrell with regards to their acceptance or their preliminary acceptance of our offer to do an addendum to the Odena Boat Ramp lease to add Willis Landing onto that. Your specific instructions, one we discussed at last, was to request to them that they sunset at the same time. So I've asked them to agree in the addendum that one of the terms is that we'll agree to the same financial terms as Odena, that we will renew the period of the 25-year lease. I believe we're two years into the Odena Boat Ramp lease right now, so they'll both sunset. If we sign the addendum this year, they'll both sunset 25 years from now. They'll be the same financial terms. And the last issue with regards to that was asking that we have a recorded document right now with the clerk's office for the Odena. What we'll do is we'll not recreate the will, but we'll do an addendum to it, have the commission exercise that, and we'll start the clock over, so the county can move forward on both of those. So if there's any questions with regards to those terms, if not, I'll go back to St. Joe, we'll memorialize that, I'll work with their staff attorney, and we'll present something to you all to ratify and then offer to the clerk for recording. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, a couple items. First one is on page 45 of the information packet. Email to the this board and other boards concerning the medical examiner and the gubernatorial commission looking for recommendation or recommendation to or not to reappoint the medical examiner. Beating with them, my recommendation to you would be to recommend to reappoint, but I would make a comment, there's room for comments. Considerable increase in budget in the last several years, and I think I would make that comment that we need to hold a line on the budget. It's gone, I would just say an increase in the last 10 years. Nothing else has gone, 50% increase in the last 10 years. So I think no one's looking at, Bay County's paying the lion's share of what it costs to run the medical examiner's office, and we pay about 5.1% or 5.2% of the total, because we don't, we have that few autopsy's to be performed. But my recommendation to recommend for reappointment, for board's consideration.
So move, Mr. Chair, with the caveat that we do send in that letter a request. Don, didn't we used to meet every year to discuss that budget? Talk a little bit about how we can improve that budget, and I don't think we've done that over the last number of years.
We have it. We have it since Bay County made a real concession of their finance office. It's a good idea. Work back then, we met 10 or 12 years in a row. Last five years, we haven't. But each one of those years, we were rolling money forward to help with the next year's budget. And the last several years, it's really increased a lot. So my recommendation to you would be also to, we recommend to hold a line on the budget and try to meet with all the counties, everybody in the circuit meets.
No move, Mr. Chair.
Got a motion by Mr. Jaeger. Second by Mr. McLemore.
Question? But I don't see any monetary figures, just for information. What kind of money we're talking here? I can go back and look in the budget, but I don't have it.
Yeah, 10 years ago, we were probably talking in the high twenties, and now we're talking 40.
40,000?
Yeah.
40,000?
Yes.
Yeah, we need to go back and read. Okay.
Got a motion by Mr. Jaeger, we got a second by Mr. McLemore.
I'm sorry, 46,000, $46,000. So we're at about $25,000 in the last several years.
Got a motion by Mr. Jaeger, got a second by Mr. McLemore. Any oppose? No oppose, motion carries, five and no.
Mr. Chairman, next item, just observation on my part. At the same commissioners, set on committees, same staff members, set on various committees, same members of public, not a lot of the public, but same members of public, set on committee, after committee, after committee. The one, one I'm talking about is Restore. City Port St. Joe has the city manager representing the city on Restore, just for the board Mr. Jaeger's representing the county on Restore Committee. If Mr. Jaeger were to step aside, or if I were to step aside, it opened up room for someone else set on the Restore Committee, because we're certainly represented on the committee.
Yeah, Don and I talked about this a little bit, Mr. Chair, and I think it would be appropriate to not have an elected official at every one of those meetings. It's fine for any of us to stop in and see how those committee meetings are going. End of the day, I don't want to be the one recommending to this board, you know, as an elected official, which, you know, projects that we think we should use. I think it would be appropriate to allow staff of each, you know, the cities and the county, the staff to do that. The City of Port St. Joe already does that. I think it'd be appropriate for the county to do that. And if that's okay with this board, I'll step aside from that committee, let Don and... this board, I'll, I'll step aside from that committee, let Don and, and Jeremy and, and others, uh, take care of the county's interest on that particular committee. And if you need a motion to that effect, I'll, I'll, I'll put a motion as, as far as to, to let me drop off that committee and, uh, um, let Don Butler do the, the chair of that committee.
Got a, got a, got a motion by Mr. Yeager?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Got a second by Mr. Mike Daniel? Any oppose? No oppose? Motion carries five and no.
Just one other comment. We now have one vacancy on the Restore Committee. We have no applications for anyone wanting to sit on Restore Committee, so we have, it's on the website, county website, you can download it, tell it in, get it to the end, and then we can get back to the board in the event you want to fill one, on that one position. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Don't pay a lot now, so anybody out there that wants to come on, come on.
Commissioner Bryant, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Commissioner Bryant, share.
Um, no, just planning on busy week ahead, been, uh, coordinating everything with Marshall and, uh, Road Department, uh, keep y'all abreast on, uh, what's going on as far as road closures, uh, just as we've been in here, there were, uh, road 12s and, uh, Mace Martin are about to, uh, have to be closed, so, uh, as, as the progress is on, we'll keep performing, uh, let you know about the contract if you see the ones, uh, working, uh, in Road Department, uh, volunteer fire departments, uh, and hopefully, uh, keep everyone safe with that on.
Yes, um, just one thing I want to follow up with the vote that we took at the last meeting, and Mr. Magison is here, and wanted him to come up and give us a status report on what we had asked him to do, and also to ask the board's support to allow, um, the county attorney to go ahead and work on the agreement between the newly formed EDA and the county, if, if Mr. Magison would.
Gary Magison, Port St. Joe, Florida, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. From the last meeting, I was, I think, given the task to try to get economic development moving back in Gulf County. Uh, since then, we have, um, I've talked to a lot of different people about serving on the EDA Board. We have, we have actually filed, uh, with the state of Florida, Gulf County Economic Development Alliance, Inc., as the operating entity. Uh, we have almost all of the, uh, people that have agreed to serve on that board here today, uh, people like Jerry Gaskin, Steve Newman, uh, Loretta Costin, and the other one that's not here today, Anna Duran. I think each of those people bring a great skill set to that committee, and I think they'll be able to guide Barry Sellers in an appropriate manner so that we can get things moving.
Um, thank you, Mr. Magison, and I want to say that I think you've done a great job moving quickly with taking, uh, action on, um, what this board asked you to do.
Thank you.
And you've put together, uh, just a great, talented board that understands economic development, understands our community. I'm very excited about the future. I think it's important that we act quickly to get the agreement in place between the county and the EDA, and would like for Mr. Novak to work with Mr. Magison to draft that agreement.
I do.
Sir.
Good morning, Mr. Magison.
Good morning.
I have a few questions to ask, and, uh, I see three of the, well, there's four of the five, may all five be here, I don't personally, I don't.
Just four of us, sir.
Four there, and what I'm fixing to say is not directed any of these, want that clearly understood. I have a lot of high regard for these people, but who selected members?
I, uh.
You did.
I did.
You handpicked the members?
Yes, sir.
Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Right, sir. All right, this alliance, uh, it's now, you can't use, it can, uh, Gulf, uh, what, what was the other one? EDC, because that belongs to Mr. Uh.
That corporate structure was already formed, so that.
Exactly, so you formed Gulf County Economic Development Alliance Incorporated.
Correct.
Am I correct there?
Correct, sir.
All right, are you, uh, operating as LLC, LLC Corporation, S Corporation?
Operating as a, a not-for-profit.
Okay, you operate in a not-for-profit, okay. Who's your president? Who's your secretary of treasure for this corporation?
The, uh, board has not met. We're planning on meeting next week to elect officers of the company.
Hey, you said that you had contacted a lot of people, were they, uh, but you just partly stated that you selected this board.
Right, I've talked to.
Again, I have no problem with these people that you selected.
I've talked to various people regarding serving on the board, and, uh, these were the members that I talked to that were most passionate about, uh, being on this board. Uh, I talked to some people that said they wouldn't be on this board.
Okay, all right, my next question is this, the county, we voted, we're gonna have to reach out and get the money.
Correct, sir.
Get the money. Uh, speak for myself, I had no knowledge that this alliance had been formed. It was, uh, apparently formed, i- is it already been, uh, recorded with the Secretary of State, State of Florida?
It has.
All right, possibly one day last week.
Uh, it was mailed to the Secretary of State, uh, Monday, a week ago.
All right, these members, is there any term limit on there, how long they would sit on this board?
There will be term limits, uh, those will be set up in the bylaws of the, of the, uh, operating agreement within the, uh, company. Those will be done, uh, when the board meets to set up those bylaws.
All right, my next question is this. This is, it's prickly, yeah. I feel like the board was kind of shunned here on this. I had no knowledge of it, and I can't speak for these others because we don't, I know Ms., uh, Commissioner Bryant was, uh, I had none, and again, due to sunshine, I can't discuss any of this. I don't know if any of these others, Commissioner, but I had no knowledge of this, and, uh, I saw an email come out on it.
Mr. McDaniel, if I may, just to clarify that, the, the vote that we took at the last meeting directed Mr. Magison to form the board.
May, may I interrupt that? No, ma'am, your vote, your motion did not clarify that. Your motion was to reinstate Barry Sellers.
So, I, I.
Will you correct us on that?
Last night, and it was clear.
Uh, it was, the vote was not to give this man authority to go out and form a committee on his own. That is taxpayers' money, it should be up to this board to appoint the committee.
Commissioner, I've reviewed the video last night. I watched it clearly, and Commissioner Smiley, prior to the vote, asked me to clarify the motion, and I restated the motion, and it, it was in the motion to have, uh, Mr. Magison go out and form this board. And the point was, and we discussed it at length at the last meeting, that it, it wasn't about putting together a political board. It wasn't about us choosing people to be on this board. It was about pulling together a five-member board that understands economic development, understands our community, and our, our folks in this community that we can all respect and get behind. That's a board that's put together for the talent and, and the, um, what each member brings to the board and how they work, work together. If we all choose, it's just an extension of us, it's just politics, and it hasn't worked that way. And that's why, when I made the motion, I said that Mr. Magison will go out and form a board, we'll give them this shot. We limited it to the, the length of time that was left under what was presented to them.
Mr. Butler, can you pull up the minutes?
One and a half.
Your, your motion was not very, your motion was not very clear at all. Your motion, the way I understood it, was to reinstate Mr. Sellers at a, at a, at his time limit, which is, uh, whatever it is, a year and a half.
You, you can go online and view the video, it's very clear.
Hold up for a minute, Mr. Butler, collect the motion, the last minute.
No, I don't.
At any, at any route. Here's the deal, ladies and gentlemen, this is $80,000 a year that we have been putting out for economic development for the last five or six years. Figure that out, that's four, $500,000. You know, I haven't seen anything. I haven't seen anything, and a year and a half from now, a year and a half from now, hopefully I'm wrong on this, we're probably not gonna see anything either. So, that's another $80,000, and you're gonna sit there, a year and a half from now, and you're gonna ask the real estate, Mr. Sellers, or whoever it may be, for another $80,000. It's like the shark tank. You know, you can't keep pouring money into a bucket, sometimes you have to fold.
I don't know where you get your crystal ball.
Yeah.
But clearly, what has happened in the past.
Yeah, I, it's there. History is there. It, it truly shows.
Mr. McMoore, what we need to do is go back to the minutes and find out exactly what was the.
Mr. Chairman, may I, since, since the board is only made up of five people, that does give room for the county and the City of Port St. Joe to add a person to that board, and we still have a manageable board at seven.
In the process of choosing the five people, who each, uh, each individual coming from a individual district, or is everyone coming from one district, or?
They're coming from, not from every district, but, uh, they're coming from, uh, three of the districts.
Well, I have a problem with, with your proposal, Mr. Magison, is we're appointing four members, we appoint one to each of our districts. Number one, that's too many people in a committee.
Right, and, sir, I actually didn't appoint them. Uh, these were people that I had discussions with, that they decided they wanted to serve on this board and be a part of it.
I, I respect the people that you appointed, but I just, again, I don't think it's, it was done correctly with the board. Maybe the intent there, but I don't think it was done correctly.
The intent was to get things started, because we have started and stopped for so long now that we needed to get things moving so we can get to work.
And, and the intent was to get folks on this board that have economic development in mind, are willing to serve, you know, take a lot of their own time, and have the ability to serve. He has really put together a respectable board. Now, the next step is to put, uh, the, all the parameters in place, how we have oversight, how the city has oversight, and that's something that he will come back to us with that plan. It's a step-by-step process, and we asked him to go and form the board. We certainly need to have oversight, and that plan will be put together, how, um, private partners buy in, and we need Mr. Magison to work with Mr. Novak and pull that plan together, come back to the board and present the details.
I, I have no problem with putting together the five-member board, but I would love to see a member come from each district. I mean, even if you're choosing, I would love to try to see recommendation, uh, participation from, from each district being put in. I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to see where one district is overpowering, that a district not, not, not dividing the, uh, the board up. It's just that you got five commissioners sitting here, five different districts.
Mm-hmm.
Now, if you can't find somebody to volunteer with you, I know that can be a problem.
It, it can be, and plus, uh, you want to be very careful that you don't choose the wrong person.
Exactly, exactly.
Chairman, may I, uh, Mr. Magison, I have a few more questions, and again, this is not, all I'm doing, this is for clarification, two weeks ago, I voted to go forward, and I stand behind my vote, I want you to understand that. My next question is this, when we combined, uh, I got on board, we put the EDC then under the chamber. Now, did the chamber have a contract with Mr. Sellers?
Yes, sir.
All right, where do we stand on that contract?
Uh, we are, we are looking at termination of that contract and a new contract being written with the new organization.
In other words, you do not have, you have not severed, the contract, the release has not been signed.
The release has not been signed yet, it will be signed soon after legal counsel reviews it and makes sure that the chamber is held harmless for any actions.
All right, in, in this, uh, in this contract, and I'm gonna ask, I ask simple questions, and sometimes they're very important, is, in this contract, I haven't read it, between the chamber and Mr., is the contract between the chamber? This board doesn't have any contract.
No, that's.
All right, is there any step, is there anything in these contracts where if, uh, the board gets involved, we gotta reimburse the chamber, uh, any monies or any, any of this in there?
No, sir.
I know it's childish questions, but they need to be asked.
Right, no, sir, there's, there's nothing that holds the county responsible.
So, with this, as we talking right now, Mr. Sellers has not signed a, a release or waiver or whatever, you still have a contract, the chamber, Mr. Sellers are still on the contract.
Yes, sir, the board, uh, last week at the Chamber Board Meeting agreed to, uh, exercise the 30-day notification in Mr. Sellers' contract pending legal approval of a hold harmless between Mr. Sellers and the, and the, uh, chamber.
All right, uh, I see Mr. Sellers is here.
Yes, sir.
Do you object, uh, Mr. Chairman, would you object if I questioned him on, Mr., you can stay right there, Gary, don't.
Okay.
Come on up, come on up, Mr. Sellers, if you would, please. Now, good morning to you. Question I have here, this five-member, I don't want to come back before this board, six, three months, six months, and hear a report, well, I can't work with the board. I'm con- continually trying to sew the holes up in this net, get this thing condensed down the way it'll go. Now, can you work with this board?
If I may, I'll boss him and say, yes, no, uh, yes, I can, uh, I've met with all five of them, uh, and Mr. Magison talked to probably about 10 different people, and.
Talking about this board, it's.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, I can work with them, and I will.
All right, my next question, where do you stand on this contract?
I've got a copy of it on my desk, and as soon as, uh, we're for sure gonna switch everything over, I'm gonna sign the, the release on the old contract and sign a new one for the next year and a half.
You're gonna sign a new contract with this, uh, Gulf County, what, Economic Development Alliance?
Yes, sir.
Your corporations.
Yes, sir, and it will end at the point that y'all end your funding. That way, uh, hopefully, as you say, we'll, we'll renew the contract, but if, uh, for whatever reason, end of that term, we're gonna shake hands, not argue, not fuss, not fight, we'll, we'll have done the best we all can, and, and we'll be here.
Thank you. Chairman, that's all. Have any questions on it? Mr. Max, thank you again, and again, as I say, it was just fact-finding information.
Understand, sir. Thank you. I, I, I think you're, you're right in the, in the steps need to go forward now, it needs to, the attorney needs to work with, uh, with the, with the group, get everything lined up. Uh, you know, I think there is some clarification that obviously, you know, that the, you know, we're gonna have to have, and that is, you know, a number of things, but I think I've got confidence that the county attorney will draw it up how it needs to be, and, and, and we can move forward. It's been a tough time, you know, economic development's tough all over, and, uh, you know, but I do think we need to move forward, uh, get this thing on, on track, and, and try to do the best we can.
Well, one more comment, I'll be quiet. I don't like to get politics involved, just go back and looking at all the steps we've been through with economic development, and, uh, as McMoore stated, we pumped a lot of money, we have a lot to show for it. They're gonna have to produce, economic times are hard everywhere, not just here in Gulf County, they're everywhere you look. Spatting for every little old dime they can get, or before they'd walk over it, but, uh, personally, gonna be holding people accountable, you know that right now, wants answers and questions, and I know with a lot of the information that you share, you cannot make it public, I understand that. I'm speaking for myself, it won't be any more of this, we give you your money and it's none of your business. I want to know a little bit about what's going on, man that.
Good morning. My name's Mike Hobson, I live, I've lived here for about four years. I just want to respond to y'all saying nothing's been. I just wanna respond to y'all saying nothing's been done. I moved my company down here two and a half years ago. Been here, had a factory here for two and a half years, got twelve employees, got twenty-five total across country, but I got twelve here in Port St. Joe with a payroll of about four hundred thousand dollars. And I was brought in by the EDC, Mr. Barry, uh, Mr. Ed Nelson. Not one of y'all have come into my place of business. Mr. Barry Sellers has been there more than ten times trying to help me grow my business. So he is working, and that has happened in the last two and a half years. So, y'all say you haven't seen anything, I'm standing here in front of you.
And, and see, I, I think that's where we're, where we're at, we don't know.
I'm here to...
We don't know what's going on.
I'm here, I'm...
Because, because they say it's none of our business, that's the problem I have.
I'm here to tell you right now, I'm here because I wanted to come here, I wanted to bring jobs here, and Mr. Barry Sellers is helping me grow my business.
That's great, that's great.
Uh, PMCS and Polomatic, we build ice machines here in town.
Oh, so you're the gentleman.
I just want y'all to know, they're doing something, and I'm, I'm an example of it. And I, and I'm seeing growth, and we're gonna grow, and Mr. Sellers is helping us.
That's all we ask for.
I just wanna let you know that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's sad that it had to come from you for us to know that, but we thank you anyway.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. And we're gonna work on a structure, that's going to be the, a, a very important component, reporting requirements and a structure, and that's the next step. Not just about pumping money out, it's about doing it right.
Well, when we, when, actually, two years ago, two and a half years ago, when I first come on, we was, we was dealing with the Ed Nelson case, and it was so much pulling against each other, I, I, I really see how things was hard to get out. And, and basically, it went from Ed to the new EDC, but we got now this pulling against each other. And, and guys, I'm not trying to be funny, but jobs coming here is gonna benefit us. It, it's not gonna benefit no one particular, it's gonna benefit us. And, and our city government and our county government got to relax a little bit to let jobs come in here. I have had guys who trying to start businesses, get in the middle of businesses and say, if I knew I had to go through what I was going through with what the, uh, the local government is putting me through, man, I would've never started. I have seen people take their business up and say, because of the local government, I'm outta here, Tan. But then they could travel twenty-three miles away, and they don't get nearby the repercussions that they get here. I, I mean, I've, I've had several individuals come to me who started a business right here in St. Joe, who told me out of his own mouth, said, Tan, I'm leaving St. Joe, took his business from St. Joe to, uh, Blountstown. And Blountstown opened their arms, come on in. St. Joe, you wanna charge for every step that we take. It's, it's ridiculous on what it costs for a person who wanna start a business. And I can know, I, I got several businesses of my own, and I know what it took for me to get, it's, for some reason, I don't understand why it's so hard, though, to start a business here in St. Joe, but then you could go to Reno and start one, that part of Gulf County, and you don't have the repercussions. You can go to Mexico Beach and start one, you don't have a repercussion, you can go to Apalachicola, but you don't have it, what we have right here in St. Joe. I don't, I'm, for some reason, I'm, I'm finding it very hard to understand. I, I, I've seen a business put up, um, I don't wanna get into, uh, someone's business, but just like I said, he was in the middle of it, and he looked me dead in my eyes, and I could look in his eyes, he said, Tan, if I knew I was gonna have to go through this, pay out the money that I'm paying for, put this business here, because dealing with the city and the county, the county got building inspectors and stuff like this. But when we deal with the city, the city got their own private contractor, so now you got to pay more money. Just like the commissioner said about structure. I don't understand why we got to have, back here within our own little small, small town. We go to our CTA meetings, and we're one of the smallest towns at the, at the meetings. Small town, and we got to have everything duplicated. The city got to have their own, the county got to have their own, and we sitting here complaining about money, and that's a bunch of money right there, and duplications. So I just, that's just something, it just, that, it's been on me to talk about it and talk about it for a while, but that's something that we need to look into. Citizens of Gulf, of the citizens of St. Joe, of my district, pay for two building inspectors. Now, if you think you paying for two is cheaper than paying for one, you lost me. The citizens of my district pay for two police departments. Two, we have to pay that sheriff salary sitting over there, and then we got to pay a chief of police salary. And don't forget what I just said, guys, we are a small town. I can say if we was big. City of Jacksonville went to county police protection, the whole city, county, police protection. They're a whole lot bigger than us. There's several more individuals right here that's doing the same thing, saving money. And this is what it's gonna take, because just like I said, while I'm banking, I still say today, Uncle Joe gone. Them big smoke stars, they're coming back. They gone. So we got to fit our lifestyle a little with the money that we got, because we got so many people want so much debt that we used to do, and without that money, we cannot do it. Our EDC got to get on their jobs and help bring us some jobs in here. But guys, this board have made a decision, so now the ones that wanna go against the EDC and the ones that was on the side of the EDC, it's time for us to come together, because we have made a decision. He's here for another year and a half. Let's not pull against it, let's make it work for everybody, because we all gonna benefit. Mr. Michael Moore, Michael Moore, you have anything?
Yep, yeah, Mr. Chairman, I do have one item, I believe, on March the twenty-second, the Florida Bass Association is coming into Gulf County, I think Ms. Jennifer's aware of this, but they're requesting to waive the fee for the Honeyville Community Center at the afternoon of Friday, March twenty-second, is what it is. They, they meet for a couple hours, turn up partners and, that's one thing, and that's, I'm, I'm motion to give them that meeting because it is a, a step forward for the county, it is tourism, you know, bringing people all over the state of Florida, in here to fish, you know, our waters, so, yes.
The move.
Commissioner, just, just so you know, they will be one of the entities we'll contact for this special funding program to contribute to that year.
Yes.
I would like to, you know, reach out to them, include them, so, because their event does bring, um, visitors to go.
Okay, I'll put that into my motion then, that you also include them on that.
Got a motion by Mr. Michael Moore?
Second.
Second by Mr. Mike Daniels. Any opposed? No opposed, motion carries, five and oh.
That's all I, Mr. Chairman.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, if I can, I just wanna go back to Commissioner Bryant. There was a motion and a second for discussion, and you all ensued in discussion. I don't know if there was a formal action taken, so I'd ask, if, if I'm wrong, you can correct me, but I believe there was a motion and a second for discussion, there was never an action.
What was it? The motion was...
About you working?
I think it was for me to work with Mr. Madison to come up with, that they'll form the bylaws and their structures for the corporation, not-for-profit. The county's goal, I believe, and the mission would be to structure our agreement for them as our economic development agent under the statute and what the deliverables will be. So there'll be an independent agreement that we'll have with that in not-for-profit. I'll work with Mr. Madison and his new preparation on that, structuring that to present something to you all.
Got a motion by Ms. Bryant?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Got a second, got a second by Mr. Mike Daniels? Any opposed? No opposed, motion carries, five and oh.
Mr. Chairman, if I can, uh, Commissioner Bryant, with regards to industrial park, we were gonna talk, if you wanna talk about, we talked about the business structure and the incentives on the back end of that commercial lease, and I didn't know if you wanted to, uh, discuss, I think we, you had asked, the commission had asked us to come back with recommendations on, uh, an incentive, an actual percentage of the net lease on the back end, so, take a formal action on that.
Stated it concisely, I think we agree that you would offer a...
It's a ten percent of the final net lease payments over those five years.
They exercise their...
It's a ten percent, so we just need approval from the commission with regards to offering that ten percent net lease reduction.
I'll make the motion.
I got a motion and a second. Motion, a motion by Commissioner Bryant, a second for discussion?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Attorney and the board, I wanna be very clear on this now. I'm not for selling that industrial park. Is that in the contract?
This agreement that you all are gonna provide to them is gonna give them the right of first refusal when it is offered for sale. So if the county decides at the end of this EDA obligation that you choose to sell this property, they will have a contractual right to first purchase the property.
Okay, now, my next question is, their lease of payment, that their, their lease of payments that they're paying each month through us, is a portion of that payment going toward the purchase of that building?
If, if... Three things happen, if you as a commission decide to sell the property after the EDA obligations, if they exercise that right of first refusal and agree on a contract price, then the answer is yes, a portion of these lease payments will be applied to their purchase price.
What percent was it?
Ten percent.
Ten percent. I'm not for that, fellas. I would've known that is...
Uh, you know, I think that's, that's what we've been talking about for an awful long time, was, was to give incentive to, to, to a group to come in. If they've created a lot of jobs, number one, they're not gonna wanna work really hard, create some jobs in our community, and not be able to purchase the, the property, I wouldn't think. And I, I think that's probably what the EDA wants you to do at some point, is, is not to continue to, to hold on to that, is for private enterprise to take that, but...
And can we clarify, uh, Mr. Novak, that nothing forces us to sell the property? It's only if we offer it for sale, they have a right of first refusal.
Okay.
Mr. Novak, could we also add in there, if they decide, after they decide they don't want it, kinda got first options to...
A reverter clause, if we ever do that, we can explore that, um, or we could put that in the agreement. Like I said, you're not forced to sell this property. So if and when you ever were to sell this property, what you're giving them is the first crack at it to buy it at the market rate, which will be in the right of first refuse for their praise price, and you're gonna give them a reduction, some consideration for their lease for the five years. But in the terms of the transfer, that's part of the contractual negotiation as well, is if you wanted to have the ability, if you sold the property to them and then brought it back to you ten, fifteen, twenty years, you'd have the ability to also have that same exchange on the back end.
But at the end of the day, it would be a vote of three to two or whatever, by majority voting, this board, if we sold that building.
You still need to vote in the future to sell that building.
Yeah, yes, that's what I said.
Chairman, okay, move forward.
Correct. Oh. Wait a minute, wait a minute. I recognize, we're talking two contracts.
Yes, sir.
Exactly, two contracts. First contract, it already stipulates in there that, uh, the person, uh, uh, Mr. Mowina must meet certain criteria in there, and I hand-delivered him the contract the other day for his signature to come back to move forward. We've got either two or four more years, I think it's twenty eighteen, sixteen maybe. Anyway, aside the point, it stipulates in there that, that he has to meet certain criteria, and one of it in, in there, I think I remember reading, twelve employees.
Sir.
Is that the correct number?
That is correct.
He assured us if we would go through. Now, again, we'll beat this thing, if, Mr. McMoore, he says maybe, he don't wanna get rid of it, well, other, but he does have a right, we're not gonna put him in there, and then if we vote to sell this and somebody else comes in, he's gonna get first shot with a little reduction, ten percent, as the, uh, Commissioner Bryant stated.
Yes, sir.
Okay, but we're talking two contracts. One of them will be, wait, it'll be several years down the line before it's act...
I got a motion by Commissioner Bryant, I got a second by Commissioner Mike Daniels. Any opposed? No opposed, motion carries, five and oh.
You ready for me?
Yes, sir.
I just have a couple of things. Number one, I know it's getting close to budget, to start budget time again. The last few years, we've started kind of in January, February. Generally, the chairman kind of either takes the lead on that or either appoints one of the board members and done. I don't know when y'all wanna, I know we've been busy, I don't know when you wanna start that budget, but, you know, it's tighter and tighter each year. And, uh, so I, you know, at some point, we need to start that process, uh, with, with the budget.
Uh, hey, uh, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mike Daniels, you sat on the board last time. I'm gonna take my hands off to you, I think you and the staff did a excellent, excellent job with that budget issue, and, uh, I'm gonna go as far as make a motion that you sit on it again this year, if you would.
Second.
I got a motion by Mr. McMoore, second by Mr. Jaeger. Any opposed? No opposed, motion carries, I don't know.
Uh, the only other thing I had is, I've had a lot of constituents, my constituents and, and people within the county, uh, that talk about recycle programs and, uh, the opportunity for recycle. I don't think anybody has told me that they want mandatory recycle, but they've, many of them, that come into our community, especially from other places, talk about an opportunity for recycle. So, uh, I had mentioned that to, uh, Waste Management, they've actually sent a, a little bit of a proposal. I'm gonna, if the board doesn't mind, I'll give this thing to Don and let him take a look at it, and at some point, let Waste Management come before this board and, and give us a proposal on what it would cost the county to do a, a opportunity for recycle. They've got, you know, from what they've shown me, they've got a lot of good things that they're doing in, in other counties. Even some of the garbage cans that they would, or, or recycle cans, that they would put maybe even in a park or at a fire department or whatever, are operated by, they're compacters, and they're operated by, uh, uh, solar power. So they've got a lot of good things going, and I think it, it'd be a minimum expense, but I think we're coming into budget time and those type things, so if, if the board would allow, on, uh, get, uh, Mr. Butler going on, on, on starting discussions with Waste Management on an opportunity for recycle for Gulf County.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if I may, uh, Mr. Butler and I met, uh, with Waste Management here, what, three weeks ago or best? And they're coming back, we, we've got some good, good, they gave us some good suggestions, and again, it goes down to the, to the monetary figure. They're gonna come back with us and we can implement some of these. They have several options that we could choose from, uh, to, uh, see if we could, would work in this county. If it would, he would save us some money and cut down on our, uh, solid waste. And that's one of the things, when we go into this budget, one of the things that eats, takes up a lot of the, our money is solid waste. Anyway, we all working...
Yeah, I've, I've had that discussions many times with them over the past six months. They've actually sent me the proposal, sent me the guidelines. So I'll get this with, with Don and at some point, get them in front of this board, uh, to talk about opportunities for recycle for Gulf County and move, move ahead.
Uh, yes, Mr. Jaeger, and also, we need to keep aware now, I think I'm correct with this, they have something like two years on their contract, is that correct, Mr. Butler?
Yes.
Okay, close to two years or whatever, and then we have to go out for bids for that contract when it comes time. They might.
Yes, that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, I'm good, I've set them up today.
Do we have anything from the public?
Carter.
Mr. Carter. Actually, we don't consider Mr. Carter as part of the public, he's one of our department, he ain't. We got Mr. Norton.
Yep. I guess.
I'm more a shy kid, Carter, no.
Yeah, he's here to improve my image, so, appreciate that. Good morning, uh, coming before the board, uh, my name is Roy Carter, I'm the county extension director for Gulf County. And I'm coming for the board, before the board, appealing for some help for our, uh, tri-county agricultural complex located in Calhoun County. A little history on the project for you new, uh, board members. Uh, Mr. Jaeger, I'm pretty sure you're aware what I'm talking about. Uh, we have a, a tri-county complex located in Calhoun County, it's an ongoing project for the last fifteen or sixteen years. We started this in nineteen ninety-seven. We were funded by the federal government and also the farm agriculture, and, uh, with the stipulation that we would elect three members from each one of those counties. We have three members from, uh, Liberty County on the board, three members from, uh, Calhoun County, and three members from Gulf County. The three members from Gulf County are Mr. Norton, David Rich, and myself. And, uh, our plan is, we have a covered arena there, that, uh, the size is like, uh, is three hundred feet by two hundred... hundred seventy-five feet. A covered arena for horse shows, car shows, anything of that nature. Uh, we, uh, in the process of trying to get roads built and also we need to, uh, uh, haul in some sand under the pavement itself. And we need to get some data hauling in, in the parking lot to build the, uh, facilities up to, uh, uh, to meet the, uh, the requirements for that type of facility. So, uh, at the present, Calhoun County, uh, came and met with Mr. Butler and myself, and they have signed on to donate a, um, loader and a grader and one truck for two days. Also Liberty County, they have signed on to donate two dump trucks for two days. So our request is, from Gulf County, we can get two dump trucks to go up along with these two counties and haul day for two days. We need about a hundred loads of day to go in that facility.
Listen. When you want, what's the timeframe on this, Mr. Carter?
We haven't decided yet. Mr. Butler, you wanna come in?
I think the coordination would be soon. Liberty County's on board now for the first time in a long time.
Right.
But Calhoun County's on board providing the loader and the dump truck and the grader. And, um, uh, we're down to three dump trucks. You know, we, we have three. Um, we, uh, Jake has a big project to get ready to start hauling, uh, once we're, um, sand material down on the, um-
Thirteen mile-
Thirteen mile road. But could we do it? We could do it.
Yeah. And, and that's my question. We, we're facing a major flood right now. I'm sure we're gonna have-
Flood our too, and we're not gonna do anything, I'm sure during this flood period.
Okay. That's the only issue we have. With, other than that, I would support it and I would make a motion in that effect.
Second, and I, I, really, we talked about this before. And I think the coordination of it and the timing of it would be critical there.
Days, days.
Right, two days. And the plan will be low down basis.
I got a motion by, I got a motion by Mr. Mike Daniels, not, Miss Mike, Mr. Macklemore. Got a second by Mr. Jaeger. Any opposed?
Uh, question here. Mr. Carter?
Yes, sir.
Uh, and I hope the board passes this. Uh, I feel confident. But our trucks go up and, uh, you and I discuss this and to save some money, if we leave the trucks in Calhoun County, you and I ride up and bring the employees back.
Right.
Cut down. Uh, you can go or I'll go. But anyway, we'll, uh, we'll-
We'll send with Mr. Macklemore, okay?
Yes. Listen, gentlemen, let them give them a vehicle and let them go. It's no big deal, you know?
You work in with Mr. Butler, work up the time and the dates with it. Have no problem with it.
I think we just want to coordinate with the other two counties and have them all there at the same time.
Right. And for you new board members, we'd like to take y'all on up at a given time and show y'all this project. It's nice project and I have to commend the board members. We have widely spent this money. In other words, we had donations and this money has been directly for our construction. We have been to other sites in Perry, Georgia, Pensacola, and all this was at our expense. Not one penny came out of it all fine, otherwise to finance those trips.
Thank y'all very much.
Uh, Karen, I'd like to address Mr. Carter here just a moment. Yeah, let's get that out of the way.
Got a motion by Mr. Mike Daniels, Mr. Macklemore. Got a second by Mr. Jaeger. Any opposed? No opposed? Motion carries five and oh.
Oh, thank you.
Appreciate you very much. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Carter, just a moment if you would. Something come up. Uh-
I broke.
Okay, we, let's talk along this side of town a little.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, last week, for, just for the public out here, Gulf County up in Weewahatchka, uh, represented fifteen or seventeen counties, I think I'm correct, and Muscambia over through Madison County.
Right.
And, uh, that's great. And we were talking about getting money available. And I think the attorney can shed a little out on it. Get Mr. Carter his facility up there finished. Gulf County now, here in March, and, uh, possibly Commissioner Bryant here may attend up for some, uh, credits. I think it will be in, uh, Gadsden County you're having it. But to go around, uh, around the state here up in this part, would be Florida Extension Service out of University of Florida having these seminars and put them on. And it was great that Weewahatchka there and Mr. Carter was the host for this meeting that took place, uh, when was it last week? Yeah, that's Monday, I think, Monday.
Last, well, well, we, we, four, four Monday nights. We, we met last, uh, Monday night too. We have one tonight.
We have another one tonight?
Yeah. And the facility is too small. We make and do, but it really is not comfortable.
No, it is. I went up myself and looked at it and we need people. We got the, we, if we can cough up eighty thousand dollars for EDC, Mr. Carter's program has been an ongoing. It's an asset to this county. And, uh, it pumps a lot in here, not only just to the county, but to the school system. And we need to get this gentleman, we need to get him fixed. Let's, let's just, let's bite the bullet and go and get him. I'm with you, Mr. Mike Daniels. Make that to a motion, please. I'll make a motion if we, uh, in the budget or look for the money here, wherever. Fifty-eight hundred, wasn't it like, do I, I want to finish the-
Right.
I'll make a motion. Fifty-eight hundred, wasn't that the number?
My second. Coffee room, fifty-eight hundred. We're not talking about kitchen. We're talking about coffee room.
Coffee room only. Fifty-eight hundred this time.
I got a motion by Mr. Mike Daniels. I got a second by Mr. Macklemore.
I have a question. Um, Don, I can't see you. I'm sorry. Um, are y'all pinpointing where you want the money to come from or are you just saying find it within the budget?
Well, on that, there's some money in that infrastructure fund and I don't know if we're gonna use it all out of place. I mean, I, you can take it out of reserve or the infrastructure fund, whichever is easiest probably, but-
My recommendation would be our, the infrastructure fund. Can make a budget and then put that on the extension service.
Motion for that. Can you include that in your motion? Just, just-
Got a motion?
All right, yes, yes.
I got a motion by Mr. Mike Daniels. Got a second by Mr. Macklemore.
It's gonna come out of the-
Infrastructure.
Infrastructure fund. Okay, good deal.
Any opposed? No opposed? Motion carries five and oh.
Anything else?
Oh, Mr. Carter.
Thank y'all very much.
Good day, Mr. Carter.
You came out good.
Anything else, Mr. Macklemore?
No, that's all. Thank you.
Hey, guys, we got to, we got to understand something with our maintenance crew. We don't have about four or five guys in maintenance. And, and to put them on a job and pull them from a job and start another job and put them on a job. And we got about four or five jobs just hanging out here.
All we do is okay the money. Allocate the money. And I'll have to coordinate through, uh-
What I'm saying, I just want everybody to understand that we got about four or five jobs out here. We got our bathrooms up in the dirty chambers that don't even have, uh, fans in them. I mean, because the workers is not there, you know? We don't have the workers that we used to have. I just want everybody to keep that in mind.
Gotta take care of the judge, Mr. Spiner.
We got to take care of the judge.
Yeah.
So we gotta keep that in mind. So, uh, do we have anything else from the public?
Come here.
Got a motion, Mr.-
Come here.
Motion by Mr. Mike Daniels. Second by Mr. Jaeger. Let's go home.